Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting for Monday, November 17th to order. If we have a fire, we're gonna go out this door, tornado, head to the basement. Shelley, roll call of alderpersons.
Alderperson Whitaker.
Here.
Alderperson Schneider.
Here.
Alderperson Duca.
Here.
Alderperson Dowling Irvin.
Here.
Alderperson Randall.
Here.
Alderperson Ferguson. Alderperson Anthony.
Here.
Alderperson Oveen.
Here.
Alderperson Dillman.
Here.
Alderperson Kaiser.
Here.
Alderperson Steele.
Here.
Alderperson Rothweiler.
Here.
Alderperson Elmore.
Here.
Alderperson Wagon.
Here.
Alderperson Sullivan.
Here.
Alderperson Astoff. Ferguson and Astoff are excused.
Okay, roll call of department heads.
City Treasurer Bierman. City Attorney Horner.
Present.
Police Chief Matt Iskam.
Here.
Fire Chief Kurt Loget.
Here.
Finance Director Jamie Maitre. Director of Public Works, Jason Cool.
Here.
Director of Waste Water, Brett Gredman.
Here.
Director of Library, The Intersement.
Here.
Director of IT, Ty Buckner.
Here.
City Engineer, Scott Sager.
Here.
Director of Health Housing and Building, Scott Tyler.
Here.
Director of Greens and Special Product, Shuster.
Yes.
Director of Human Resources, Phil Clegg. Director of Maintenance, Mike Schaefer.
Here.
City Treasurer Bierman and Finance Director Jamie Maitre are both excused.
Okay, if anybody will please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, no public hearing tonight, so public participation is open in two to three minutes. If you'll come forward, just state your names, please.
Oh my God, because. Rick Brown, Belleville. I guess my daughter's right, using the word racist around here doesn't seem to help because nobody cares. So I'm gonna talk about the law. You might remember Mr. Bitter, he used to be an alderman here. He got a thirty thousand dollar judgment against you because you tore a sign down. You sent the cops or somebody down to tear a sign down at his business. The law is eighteen USC two forty-one, conspiracy against rights. It includes the First Amendment, but it also includes due process. Section two forty-one makes it unlawful for two or more persons to agree to injure, threaten, or intimidate a person in the United States in the free exercise or enjoyment of any right or privilege secured by the constitutional laws of the United States. The offenses are always a felony, always. And if the criminal violations, you can get up to ten years of imprisonment. And if there's aggravating factors like somebody killed themselves, being so distraught over not getting their zoning hearing done that they killed themselves, you could be charged with manslaughter. That's a fact, okay? Now, the, yeah, so I asked a question. Is it a violation of eighteen USC two forty-one that results in suicide, death punishable? Yes, a violation of eighteen USC two forty-one that results in death, doesn't mention suicide, but it says death for a reason, because that could be brought in. Now, dealing with the due process, the due process that you're gonna violate tonight when you vote this thing down is that he who votes must see the evidence. None of you saw the evidence except for two aldermen. And you've got, the second due process violation is that Mr. Johnny Anthony came out and explained to us after the meeting last time, a thing called aldermanic privilege. You guys in your eight wards get aldermanic privilege. You get to decide all zoning cases, and everybody else votes with you. That was explained to us, four witnesses. Four witnesses saw this. Johnny Anthony explained how that worked. Well, I'd like to vote for you, but I can't. I want stuff in my ward if I want it done. That is a due process violation. And if you do anything other than approve this tonight, all it has to be is a simple majority. I will personally go to the US Attorney and the FBI with this, okay? Thank you.
Mr. Haggar.
Michael Haggar. I'm gonna speak on the amended TIF agreement for Bluntson-Moore. In there, I've got all my facts from the documents correct, they are reducing their investment in the property by twenty percent, yet they're still gonna receive one hundred percent of the requested reimbursement. They're reducing the number of employees being committed in the first year by thirty percent, yet they're still gonna receive one hundred percent of the requested reimbursement. They're reducing their sales tax commitment by sixty percent, and yet they still receive one hundred percent of the requested reimbursement. There's also additional part about them committing to the growing phase of the project. Well, I have to say that when you have verbiage in there that says, "We will commit to the growing phase before a certain date," what does commit mean? Does commit mean that you could have a photo op with a groundbreaking ceremony? Well, we've committed to it, so it's good. Nothing actually happens. I'd say that that section should be stricken and reworded to deal with the date of operation of the grow section, something that is substantial. I mean, we're talking about eight hundred thousand dollars of taxpayer money that's going to fund this dispensary rather than fixing roads and sidewalks. So the contract should be a little bit tighter than it is. And also, I noticed that we talked a number of times ago about not doing TIF agreements with, with it not having the property owner involved in it. One of the things we have is many LLCs. Well, when you have an LLC that's the operation, they have no assets. So if they default on the agreement, then there's no bank account to go after, there's no people to go after, there's no real property that can be leaned, and the taxpayers end up losing. And if you need any refresher for that, there's a current lawsuit dealing with exactly that in the city of Belleville. All right, I'll finish up, and I'll do the next thing next time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Brown, you've already had your time.
I was asked by an alderman to come up here and talk tonight.
You've already spoken.
The one that called me a son of a bitch at the last meeting on a hot mic.
Mr. Brown, you've already spoken.
Why are you calling this?
Somebody did. And it wasn't this guy, the guy that sat here that's not here. But somebody called me a son of a bitch at the last meeting and was caught on a hot mic. You wanna hear it?
No, please sit down.
It's right here. I'm gonna show it to the newsman. Oh, they've already seen it.
That's fine, please sit down.
You know, call my bitch, my mother a bitch.
Mr. Brown, please sit down.
Good evening, my name is Kelly Roberts, and there are two issues on the agenda that I would like to speak to. The first one is ordinance nine four three nine dash two zero two five, and that says zoning for Victoria Martin. I just wanted to say in support of what she is, she's trying to do, that the fact that there are additional people that want to come and visit Belleville, I think that that speaks highly of the neighborhood that she's in. And so her wish and desire to have it as an additional Airbnb, I think that falls in alignment with what's happening on one side of their property, which is already being used as an Airbnb. I also think that gives opportunity for someone who is a young person and really getting her feet into real estate, that this is an excellent opportunity for her to do so, so I would like for you all to reconsider the zoning request. The next one is in regard to my own zoning request, and that's at two twenty-four South Charles Street. And I am so surprised the pitchforks have not come out yet, so I'm gonna go ahead and read this in preparation for it. So that's ordinance number nine four four three dash two zero two five, and I'm gonna say that I'm here tonight to place on record that there have been several mistruths which were shared about our property at two twenty-four South Charles Street, specifically regarding parking and local traffic. My partner and I have used these distortions as an attack on our character, our integrity, and our small business. To begin, we did conduct a minor traffic study in late October. After our initial zoning meetings, we were not afforded the opportunity to formally present these bindings of the study of that report, which states, "Using ITE's Trip Generation Manual, tenth edition, for apartment multifamily land use, small rental projects generate trips on a per dwelling basis. A five-minute residential building with a mix of two bedrooms, two one bedrooms, and one studio is expected to generate approximately thirty-seven vehicle trips per day, about seven point three trips per dwelling. During the AM peak hours, this equates roughly to two to three trips entering and exiting combined, and during PM peak hour, three to three vehicle trips. When compared to nearby collector and arterial streets that carry several thousand vehicles per day, this additional, this additional traffic represents well under one percent of existing volumes, and is considered operationally negligible. Accordingly, the proposed five-minute development is not expected to create any measurable adverse effects in intersection operations, neighborhood traffic conditions, or overall level of service." The next issue we would like to address is parking. The front of our building has over twenty-five feet of linear parking, which allows for two cars. The back of our property has approximately fifteen hundred square feet of parking, which allows for five cars. Additionally, just four houses down at two oh eight North Charles, which, like our property, shares an outlet with Alvin, there are fourteen, one thousand four hundred and eighty-eight square feet of paved parking, and that property is also five minutes. I present all of this tonight to demonstrate that my partner and I have done our due diligence, and that we operate in a spirit of truth and transparency. While this information may not change the vote tonight, we wanted to ensure that the facts about our property at two twenty-four South Charles Streets have been clearly and publicly stated. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Anybody else for public participation? Okay?
I wasn't aware that this meeting was happening, neither of my alderpeople told me.
Ma'am, you need to state your name for those.
I'm sorry, Victoria Martin. I think we've met all of four. I wasn't aware that this meeting was happening. I thought that my property had been decided on, what was that, three weeks ago? So I'm kind of confused, and I had to hear about this from other people, not from both of my alderpeople. So why am I here, just learning about this now? I would love to speak to this due process, because I am so confused about what is going on here. Let me take that back. I'm not confused, I know your buddy Jason set this up, I know that's what's going on. What I would love to know is why has this happened two, three weeks ago? And I get blindsided by this entire council, everybody voting down my Airbnb when it was approved by the zoning commission. I'm just finding this out now, and here I've been foolishly living in Belleville for the last four years, paying ridiculous property taxes. Now, there was an attack on my character made three weeks ago, and I'm sorry, I didn't have the time to prepare a speech or have any sort of consensus. There was an attack on my character, as if I'm a bad neighbor. Let me be very clear, that that person that you're defending, those several neighbors who, you won't tell me their names, you won't tell me how many, and the only neighbor who's turned over since I had my Airbnb approved three years ago. I spoke to him ten minutes ago, he's confused, and he says, "No, I would love to approve that for you." So explain to me what is happening here? This is a crazy thing. I studied about Latin America, that's the kind of thing that happens there, not in this country. This is absurd. Now, let me get, oh, yeah, who's thoughts, I'm sure. Now, I would love to know why neither of my alderpeople informed me that this meeting was happening tonight, despite knowing that I would love to have my Airbnb approved so that I could host more service people. I had to turn down service people whose home was burned down and want to stay there temporarily while their home is rebuilt. Just a week ago, I hosted a returning service person to Scott who I hosted two years ago when he PCF'd off. This is insane to me. And for saying, "Your argument with several neighbors are concerned that it's gonna bring dangerous people to the neighborhood?" My puppy Airbnb? Are you out of your mind? We're two blocks from Saban Liquor. I don't hear you complaining about them. And your argument is we're bringing in people into the neighborhood withers from elementary school. There's also a middle school, but I find it very interesting you're not concerned about those people, those kids. Now, again, I didn't have any time to prepare, I was in the shower half an hour ago, but this is ridiculous, an absolute violation of my due process. And I would love, I would love an explanation for both of my alderpeople in the city council about why I was not told about this need at all, why three weeks ago I thought this was done.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, there are rules for reading out the, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I have three more seconds, but this is, this is appalling.
Anybody else for public participation? Okay, we're gonna move on. Presentations, recognitions, and appointments. Just a reminder, proclamation, Small Business Saturday is November twenty-ninth. I need a motion to approve the city council meeting and executive session minutes for November third, twenty twenty-five. Dowling Irvin?
Kinda, sir.
Okay, motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Claims, payroll, and disbursements. I need a motion to approve claims and disbursements in the amount of two million five hundred forty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and thirteen cents, and payroll in the amount of one million twenty-five thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and six cents.
Motion. Dowling Irvin.
Okay, motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duca.
Aye.
Dowling Irvin.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Oveen. Dillman.
Aye.
Kaiser.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wagon.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. No reports, oral reports, motions from economic development annexation, Alderperson Dowling Irvin.
Yes, do I have authorization to read these?
No, I want you to isolate eleven eight three, please.
Eleven eight three?
And eleven eight two.
So you want me to do the individual? Eleven dash A one, motion to de-annex two sixty-three West Taff Street, parcel number zero eight dash two eight dash zero dash four one oh dash zero two three.
Steele, second.
Okay, motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes, why, what generated this type? Didn't see any paperwork on the.
And Eric can correct me if I'm wrong, so their house is in the county. The other parcel has the two outbuildings, and they're wanting to build another outbuilding on it. And obviously, with our zoning code, it's not allowed on separate parcels, so they're asking to just de-annex that section into the city, or into the county, sorry. Alderperson here. Roll call.
Schneider.
Yes.
Duca.
Aye.
Dowling Irvin.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Oveen.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Kaiser.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Present.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wagon.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion eleven dash A two, motion to approve an amended development agreement with Bluntson-Moore Holdings LLC for remodeling of the existing facility located at seventy-three hundred Twin Pyramid Parkway for a cannabis dispensary.
Sullivan, second. Okay, motion and a second, discussion?
Whitaker.
I was gonna ask for Eric to come up and explain the revisions to the development agreement.
This agreement was drafted by previous staff, so I was not involved until recently. But the first payment was made, and the request for the second payment came through. And when I was requesting the documentation, that's when it was brought to my attention that some of the numbers that were in the original agreement were combined with the dispensary and the grow center. So I think there was some confusion whether, I don't know whose side is on. So these were the numbers that were provided to me, and the commitment provided to me
So, excuse me. On the basis of what they told you, they're saying that the numbers originally were based on the fact that there would be both the dispensary and the growth facility?
That's my understanding, that the, the investment numbers and the sales numbers and so forth were, were based on the combination of those two facilities, both on the same property. But a portion of the building will be used for the dispensary, and another portion will be used for part of the growth center, and then later on, that will be the additional expansion of the growth center as well.
But they knowingly signed a development agreement based upon what was given them, and they didn't correct it then? Yeah, I'm, I'm inclined not to be in favor of voting for this.
Yep.
Any other discussion?
No.
Alderperson, did you have a question? No.
Well, sir, I know that there was some discussion, but can you tell us what was recommended in terms of disposition of the check, like when, if the check was approved, when would it?
It would be, of course, after all the documentation of the investment that was made, as well as the issuance of the occupancy permit.
So unlike the previous check, it would be more specific in regards that would ensure that it was actually open.
That's correct.
Eric, would you mind sharing the differences, the discrepancies in the original to where we are now?
Sure, the investment amount was, went from one point eight million to one point four. The jobs were thirty in the first year, but that's been reduced to twenty, and then it will go to ten in the second year, where it was two before. So essentially, the same number of jobs, just throughout another two years. And then the eight, eight point five million in sales is, was reduced to three point five, but it's just for the dispenser.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
And they thought, they were combining the dispensary and the grow, the, the grow. Again, I, I picked this up, you know, two-thirds of the way down the road, so that's my understanding, but, you know, I didn't, I didn't. The biggest discrepancy sounds like the last one, from eight million to three million. And that's the statement that they gave you was to vote, we thought that was vote. That's in our discussion, yes, that was, when we talked about that, eight point five, they said that's when the dispensary and the grow, grow center are both fully open and in operation. And I wanted to change it to three, because they're fixing that on. On the dispenser's side.
What was their, what was their intent regarding the growing part of that?
That they'll start construction by April first of twenty-six.
If that occurs, will those numbers then be more in line with the original numbers that were, that were told us, or is there still a significant discrepancy?
That's my understanding, is that the numbers will be closer to that once, once the growth center is open to operation.
So what we're really talking about now is just taking it like, like stage one and stage two, whereas the remaining, kind of all of them munged together?
Right.
So that when actually stage one and stage two is accomplished, those numbers will be reflected in the original agreement?
That's correct.
Alderperson Schneider.
I'm, I'm not understanding at all. So what happens if we both know on this? Does it go back to the drawing, I mean?
It passed out of committee, so we're gonna vote tonight yes or no on the development agreement.
So, but what if we both know, and a majority is no, it has to go to the first development agreement, the original? They're not amending it.
It would revert to the original, that's what you're asking.
Yes, that's what I'm asking. And if they don't uphold their part of the agreement, what happens? I mean?
Well, we have, we look at our options at that point, but that's not a subject for a full concession. I think the main issue is time, isn't it, Eric? The development agreement went through a certain date, and when that date is, they can't meet that expectation. They bring, I understand they bring in construction problems to that location due to its former use of that building. So they had to make adjustments to do that, which is the way the project from getting going. That's my understanding, is that's their explanation for it. So this really extends the date to December thirty-first, remember, right? Right. Okay, December thirty-first. The second thing is, in the committee, we work together to ensure that no more funds go out to them until the doors are open, which would be the occupancy permit. So they're not gonna get another check, even if they provide the receipts, prior to, we are open, we are selling, such that we're getting the sales tax revenue off of it before they would get the payment from us, that the second, or the second payment out of the agreement. Correct? Right. Okay. So that's some of the safeguards that we talked about in economic development, to try to make sure that they are open before they do it, and they have a commitment from them by April one of twenty-six to start construction of the grow. So we believe that with those adjustments, that the agreement would be more effective by doing that.
Any other discussion? Eric, anybody? No? Okay, roll call.
Aye.
Dowling Irvin.
Aye.
Randall.
No.
Anthony.
Aye.
Oveen.
No.
Dillman.
Aye.
Kaiser.
No.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wagon.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
I'm, I'm standing, I'm not sure what I'm voting, so I don't wanna just go with everybody.
Motion carries. Please make the question.
Okay, Alderperson Dowling Irvin, eleven eight three?
Yes, eleven dash A three, motion to approve a development agreement with Servell Events Venue for acquisition and remodeling of the existing facility located at twenty-nine North Sixty-fourth Street for an event venue.
Sullivan, second. Okay, I have a motion and a second, discussion?
I'd like to see this table tonight, because I, in all fairness to the individual who would like to have the event center, I'd like to see what the, what we're paying in terms of this eighty thousand dollars, to make sure that there is, everything that's submitted as an expense qualifies for the money that she's receiving. The, this whole thing has been blown out of proportion. I talked to a roofing contractor just recently, Taylor is a commercial roofing contractor, and he told me, he said, "Rafi," he said, "basically, it's gonna cost, based on the, the dimensions of the roof and everything, and the, and the problems associated with it being vacant for almost twenty years, it's gonna cost at least two hundred thousand dollars in order just to do the roof." So I'd like to see what the total expense for the budget is, and that way we can vote on it. If it's, if it's, you know, she's talking about five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, money appropriated will be for the cost of the purchase as well as the remodeling. I find that difficult to believe. Thank you.
I don't, I don't have a problem with, with it, you know, it's, it's always been my contention that people that go into these ventures, that they do their due diligence, that they know practically what they're gonna spend. And, you know, I don't wanna be legislating what they're, what they, what they did, and how much money they got to spend on it. And I, I discussed this with, with Rafi. I'm not, I'm not, he doesn't, he, he knows that I don't wanna say this, but the, the person that, that's, that's doing this, you know, I mean, I have faith that if they're gonna put up a half a million dollars, and we, we, we were talking about awarding them an eighty thousand, they're not gonna get the eighty thousand, we're not gonna hand them a check for eighty thousand dollars. They gotta do the work first. Am I correcting in this area?
Yeah, so every agreement that I, that I deal with, that I work with, that I, that I write, or, you know, they have to submit the documentation. I, I literally go through, I, the number of Home Depot receipts I've gone through, scratched out the candy bar that they bought when they were in line, you know, I spent hours and hours doing that. So, yeah, I, I make sure everything's eligible before I send anything for processing. And if, and if there's an issue or something missing, I reach out to the, to the, the other party to the agreement, and make sure we get the documentation we need before we do any kind of processing of payments, so. And, and we also put a language in here that they have the occupancy permit as well, so.
Right, absolutely, and, and that's my point. We, we are, we are, these development, this development agreement is, is pretty straightforward. We're not going to, uh, to do anything, and, and, like I say, I can't, I don't know what this lady has in her checkbook. She may have two million she can spend. But a lot of times doing it with these things, uh, people, uh, make sure, I mean, if I'm going to spend a half a million dollars, I'm going to make sure that I can do this project. And, uh, hopefully, you know, we pray that, that she's able to do it, you know. That's all we can do, you know, that she can get it done, you know. So, uh, that's where I'm at on it. I, I, I believe in letting them, letting them, letting them do it. Hey, she says she can do it, so let's let her do it.
Okay.
For me, the issue is the safeguard. In other words, you know, people open and close businesses all the time. There's people that have really good ideas about things, are prudent investors, and there's folks that don't. Um, our concern is to be a safeguard, the taxpayer dollars, the TIF dollars. And I believe that our, um, agreement protects our TIF dollars because she doesn't get the check until there's an occupancy permit and she's actually able to open the building. So, um, so I think that that is important to understand, that this agreement does protect taxpayer dollars while still allowing the freedom for an entrepreneur to try and open a business in Belleville.
And at every agreement, Rafi, the responsibilities of the, of the developer is the penalty section, where they have to meet every item within their, their area, or else there are penalties associated with it.
Right. Anybody else? No? Okay, roll call. Don Nerven?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
No.
Gentlemen?
Aye.
Kaiser?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, um, Alderperson Whitaker, motion from finance.
I'm at the finance committee, and I can motion to approve workers' compensation and property liability insurance regula with I C R M T and cyber liability regula with Cowbell, Palomar, Excess, and Circle Smiles Insurance Company, as recommended by our board.
Randall, so moved.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Roll call. Randall?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Gentlemen?
Aye.
Kaiser?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Don Nerven?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Uh, motion from Parks Board is a motion to waive the formal bidding procedure to utilize Omni contract for the purchase of a play structure and surfacing from game time care of recreation in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty-five cents for Ladderman Park coming from TIF three and grant funds.
Randall, so moved.
Dolly Nerven? Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call. Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Gentlemen?
Aye.
Kaiser?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Don Nerven?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, uh, communication. Shelley? Can I read them together?
Please.
Okay. Twelve A, Saint Patrick's Day, three fourteen, twenty twenty-six. Request from Ancient Order of High, High Parades to host the Saint Patrick's Day Parade Saturday, March fourteen, twenty twenty-six. Eleven A M. to one P M. street closure request, parade lineup, North Third Street from West A Street to West C Street, ten A M. to one thirty P M. Parade rolling route closure, Third Street to West Main Street, West Main East to Oak Street. Additional city, city services, trash coders, barricades, no parking signs, picnic table cones, cleanup, and personnel. Twelve B, Saint Justin Parish picnic, nine twenty-six, twenty-six. Request from Saint Justin of Canada Dairy Church, parish picnic, Saturday, September twenty-six, twenty twenty-six. Twelve P M. to eleven P M. Additional requests, picnic tables and trash coders. Uh, Beer Stocklin Fest, two seven, twenty twenty twenty-six. Request from Schumore Brewing to host the Beer Stocklin Festival, Saturday, February seventh, twenty twenty-six. Eleven A M. to ten P M. street closure request, use of Hattermore Square, North Church Street. Between East Main Street, Alouay Residence must have access to the driveway for food trucks, additional city services, picnic tables cones, barricades, no parking signs, trash coders, and approval for higher goods following Carter, Carter, and Gaiden. I need a motion? Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, no petitions tonight, no resolutions. I need a motion to read by title only. Ordinance is ninety-four thirty-nine, ninety-four forty-three, and ninety-four forty-four.
So moved, Rothweiler.
Steele, second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Shelley? Can we read them together?
Please.
Fifteen A, ordinance ninety-four thirty-nine, twenty twenty-five, is only in regards to case thirty-eight, October twenty-fifth, twenty-five. Victoria Martin. Fifteen B, ordinance ninety-four forty-three, twenty twenty-five, is only in ordinance in regards to case thirty, October twenty-eighth, five. Elijah and Kelly Roberts. Fifteen C, ordinance ninety-four forty-four, twenty twenty-five, ordinance approving petition to disconnect Saint Clair County Permanent Personal Number zero eight two eight zero four one zero seven three three.
Randall, so moved.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call. Ovian?
Aye.
Gentlemen?
Aye.
Kaiser?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
I'm staying.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Don Nerven?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have no unfinished business, miscellaneous and new. I need a motion to approve motor fuel claims in the amount of eight thousand, sixty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Schneider?
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call. Gentlemen?
Aye.
Kaiser?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Don Nerven?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have no executive session. I need a motion to adjourn.
Randall, so moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
It was, the only thing I know is we voted down.